Recused for these two items.
Could I just note that Commissioner Gunkel is recused because he lives within 500 feet of the project? Thank you.
Logan, Commissioners. So now we're looking at Park on Powell Master Sign Program at 1333 and 1303 Powell Street. Here's the location. Powell Street is on the northern side of the property. Doyle is on the eastern, Stanford on the southern part, and Hollis to the west. So Master Sign Program is required for all developments with five or more retail tenant spaces, and it creates standards for tenant signage. So it establishes maximum allowable sign area, defines permitted sign materials, defines allowed sign types, and does not dictate sign content. It's designed to provide guidance for tenants over time as they may come and go. So the sign types and tenant spaces, there's seven different sign types that are included in this Master Sign Program, and where they are allowed varies by the type of tenant space and the design with the building. And so we're going to go through each of the types of sign spaces, one by one, and you'll see that there's several different types of spaces, A, B, and C, and those will be shown in the lower right-hand corner of most of the slides you're about to see as well, for reference. So the first type of sign that's permitted as part of this Master Sign Program is a canopy sign. The canopy signs are only to be placed above the canopy, not below. Originally, when applicant turned in his application, they showed the canopy signs as being options for both above and below the canopies, and staff suggested that the space underneath the canopy should be reserved for pedestrian-oriented signs, where it was more appropriate to have signs facing outwards towards the street on the top of the canopy, and the applicant agreed with that assessment. So these are limited to 30 square feet per sign, and they can't encroach too closely to the vertical fins that are shown in the middle here. So they are respectful of the architecture as well. And if you look in the bottom corner here, it shows you where these are allowed, and these are the tenant spaces that have canopies on them. So storefront panel signs, you could actually remove a window and place panel signs, such as shown here. These are restricted to, I apologize, 20 square feet. That information is over here, and they are permitted in all of the tenant spaces except for the ones on the south side of the building. Projecting signs are underneath the canopies that we just spoke about, and they are restricted to 10 feet, 10 square feet maximum, and they have to have eight feet of clearance, which is consistent with building codes. And they're also allowed on all building fronts there. In situations where there is no canopy, they cannot go above the natural break in the building here. So plaque signs are another option, and they're limited to six square feet and go on the sides of the tenant spaces. Window graphics are also an option, one per frontage, and limited to 16 square feet. Actually, I believe that might have been changed later on. Sorry, let me check. There might be a discrepancy. Yeah, there's a discrepancy. The intent is not to have a limit of one per frontage. It's just limited to 16 square feet total for all the window space. That way, if you wanted to have two eight-foot-square signs, you could do that as well, but you couldn't exceed 16 square feet total. And temporary signs are also limited to one per tenant storefrontage and to a duration of 60 days. These would also be required to have sign permits. Temporary signs without Master Sign Programs are required to have permits, and these would be as well. They're also not illuminated. The Master Sign Program also restricts what type of open and closed signs can be in the windows, but this isn't something that the planning department would regulate. That would strictly be between the management or ownership of the building and the tenants. The planning department does not regulate open and closed signs. So for Master Program, Master Sign Program findings needs to be found. It promotes visual harmony, and this application does provide guidance for materials, lighting, location, and sign size throughout the development. The signs must relate well to the building and be compatible with the architecture, and the proposed sign locations and quantities do take into consideration building features such as the canopies and window spaces, and it must be in character with the surrounding area, and the high-quality materials and size of signs is consistent with the visual character of the area. Additionally, Master Sign Program findings must be that the total aggregate sign area is consistent with the planning regulations of one square foot of sign area per linear foot of public frontage. These are consistent with that. They cannot, the amount of square footage, regardless of what type of signs you pick, cannot exceed that for this sign program. And in some case, in some cases, it may be more strict in that if you had several frontages of tenant space and exceeded 100 square foot, feet, pardon me, the Master Sign Program says you cannot have more than 100 square feet of signage. So if you were to have more than 100 square feet of tenant space, you cannot have more than 100 square feet of signage. So permitted signage is no more than necessary. What I just said is consistent with that and is also consistent with the planning regulations, which do not permit excessive signage, and the Master Sign Program must comply with Chapter Five, Article 16, which is the sign section of the planning code, and it's compliant with those. Required findings for signs is that it must be consistent with the general plan to respect architecture and accentuate activity and presence at the street level, is how this application is consistent with the general plan. The signs must conform to the Emeryville Design Guidelines, and this does that by using unified building facade, integrating all elements, and having signs that are legible and readable with high-quality materials. As I talked about, Master Sign Program doesn't dictate content, but it does talk about material and material quality in here, and also when it would come for review before the planning staff, planning staff ensures that signs must be legible. Also, it must be high design quality with no adverse effects to the surroundings and sound to be compatible with the buildings in the surrounding area and not be excessive. So staff recommends approval for this. Ted Luthen, who's applicant, is also here and has something to say, so if you'd like to ask me questions now or after he speaks, either way.
Any questions for staff?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was concerned about the total square footage.
Yeah.
Is restricted, but you could spread that along three different sign types?
Right, because the sign types are limited to themselves and square footage, right? So one type of sign could have a maximum of 10 square feet. Another has a maximum square footage of the canopy sign, for example, of 30 square feet. So you could have a canopy sign and a window sign and, say, a plaque sign, and all of those together might only total, say, 56 square feet. And what it could not exceed is the 100 square feet was the ultimate maximum, regardless of if you have more than 100 square feet of frontage. But if you only had a tenant space with, say, 30 square feet, because the maximum is one square foot per linear of street frontage, you could only pick one of those signs. So if you have 50, you could have two. Does that make sense?
How many of those could be electrified?
It, do you mean illuminated?
Yeah, illuminated.
It specifies in the plan which ones can be illuminated. It is rather limited. Let's just check.
So only one of them could be?
So each sign says whether it can be illuminated or not on the page. So on page five, where it discusses lighting for canopy signs, it says it may be externally lit and specifies that it has, it can be halo lit or lit using decorative exposed neon, push-through acrylic lettering, or backlit. So it's very specific about that. For storefront panel signs, which is on page six, it says that the signs may be externally lit, halo lit, or lit internally. For projecting signs, here's where it explicitly says that it must be dimmable, but that's also in the conditions of approval. It can be achieved specifically with either external top-down lighting, push-through letters, or internally illuminated graphic elements. For plaque signs, which are on page eight, it has to be external top-down spotlighting or push-through or internal illumination of graphic elements. And window signs may not be illuminated, and temporary signage and open-closed signs may also not be illuminated. So as I perhaps misspoke earlier, most of the signs can be illuminated in some way.
Sarah, what is a vacuum-formed sign?
It's kind of like what it sounds like. It's like a plastic sign where they [makes a sound] and form the sign with sound effects.
Because at first I thought, I thought you mean the signs where they blow the air into them and they wave around and...
Oh.
That's, I thought it was that type of sign.
Reverse vacuum.
Reverse vacuum.
Yeah, that would, no, that's not what it is.
Okay.
Yeah.
We should prohibit those, too.
They are through the sign regulations.
Yeah.
Overall. Yeah, so that doesn't have to be called out within this document.
Okay.
But I still don't understand what a vacuum-formed sign is.
Like shrink?
Does anybody have a better, or maybe, do you like to help?
You have to come to the microphone.
I'm Ted Luthen from Ross Luthen Creative. A vacuum-formed sign, you see these in service stations, gas stations, the Shell sign, they take a piece of plastic and they vacuum form it, so it becomes sort of dimensional, but it's plastic and the whole thing glows, so we're discouraging that. And the other thing about, if I could just respond to the lighting, we very specifically say that the backgrounds can't be lit, so it says there's no internally lit sign cabinets. So if somebody's name goes up, you know, tenant name, only the letters themselves can light, not the background, so you're not going to get this glowing sign box.
Thanks.
Since you're here, I have one question for you.
Sure.
On the window signs, I see that there are only, whoops, where's window signs? I see that it's only 16 square feet, I'm assuming per tenant, that would be allowed.
Per frontage, yeah.
And then it says not to exceed 15% of window area. Is the intent of that, that it would be 15% of any particular window pane?
Exactly, yeah. And the thought with the 16 square feet is that, and not limiting the number, is that if somebody wanted to have a little logo and they wanted to repeat, you know, a coffee cup with a cafe and have it running along the bottom of a window, they could kind of disperse that, as long as they weren't completely obliterating a window and with more than 15%, obviously, or exceeding the 16 square feet.
Did you find it?
I Googled, I Googled the vacuum. I had to see what they were talking about there, okay. Good. I don't have any other questions.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If anyone from the public would like to speak on this item, please come forward.
Commissioners, I'd just like to remind everyone of the often offensive feel of the internally illuminated sign. I mean, there's something about the internal illumination that makes it a lot brighter than an externally illuminated sign, and I'm particularly concerned about the signs on Hollis, or sorry, on Powell that face the condominiums immediately across the street. I'm personally a little bit concerned also if the signs at the live-work units facing Stanford are internally illuminated, but it reminds me of the Art.com sign and the signs that people tend to take offense at the most tend to be the internally illuminated signs that just appear a lot brighter than externally illuminated signs, and I'd like to ask your consideration of where those signs are located and not located in your decision. Thank you.
I think that's a good question. Is there a restriction on how off, I mean, when the signs have to be turned off at night?
No.
Could we place something like that?
You could.
Can you give me a better description of an internally lit sign? Because I'm thinking of Scarlet City signs who just put theirs up but aren't illuminated yet, but I know the letters on that aren't particularly lit. I think they're lit from behind, so would that be considered an internally lit sign?
Yeah.
Because I don't think that would be bright or offensive.
Internally illuminated, I think generally refers to when the, when the light is directing towards you, when you're looking at the sign. So there, there's like signs that have lights within them but are like halo lit.
Yeah.
The light points backwards.
Okay.
So that's, that's sort of internally illuminated, but it's, I don't think it's usually what people are referring to.
So is internally lit, what you said, the box lit that are not going to be allowed, or is that different than the one you said is not going to be allowed?
We're not allowing the, the background of the sign to light up.
Okay.
So if you imagine your screen up here, the background is lighting up right now.
Right.
If you imagine the reverse of that, where the background was dark and only the lettering was showing up, that's the effect that we're going to have.
Okay.
Is there, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item?
Yeah, the, the Apple Store sign there.
Uh huh.
Where just the apples lighting up.
Okay.
That's basically what we'll have. The background will be opaque and the lettering of the logo itself.
So the reverse of that would be if the black background was lit and the apple was black?
Exactly.
And that would be, okay. And Brad, is that what you're concerned with, or is what you're talking about something different? I'm just trying to get a picture of what Brad is asking that we not do.
Yes, my concern is not the halo, halo lit, but the internally illuminated where the light is.
So what he's describing and saying is not allowed. Is that meeting your criteria, or do you want something else not allowed?
I'm also asking that anything that's shining at you, that where the sign itself is illuminating, not be allowed.
Like the Art.com.
Well, the best example is this picture in the middle here, which is what was called a frontlit sign.
Right, or an externally illuminated.
Which, you know, you go into any high-end little town and that's all they allow.
Right.
And it makes an enormous difference.
Having lived in Carmel, working for the city, I know what that night ambiance is like.
I have one more question for the applicant, if you, if you wouldn't mind. Can you maybe walk us through which signs in this Master Sign Program would be allowed to be internally illuminated? I was trying to look for myself. So it looks like the projecting signs would be.
Yeah.
And then the, the box signs, but not the background. And then, am I missing anything?
Let's see, the, the signs that are up on the canopies, so somebody, I would anticipate that somebody will have individual letters that could either light up halo or the letters themselves could light. So that's the canopy sign on page five. Oh, here we go. We can navigate right here.
There.
So the canopy signs, the signs that are above the canopy could be lit. The storefront panel, like the Apple sign, if they decided to change a glass panel into a sign, that could be lit, again, just the logo or the lettering. The little projecting signs, and these are fairly small. I think the projection's limited at 30 inches, so they're, you know, this big sign, and again, backgrounds can't be lit.
Okay, so the second one here, I can't read the text on that. Would that be lit within or only lit from without?
It could be done either way.
And that would be okay?
If they wanted a little, little gooseneck spots on it, they could do that.
Right, but being lit within, wouldn't that be shining out?
Yes, the, the lettering will shine out.
They're all backlit signs.
Yeah.
Because you can't, you can't halo lit a projecting sign.
Okay, well, I've seen the second one, it's, what is it, K or APA?
It's Avalon.
Okay, Avalon, okay. I'd see that as being like a, a plastic translucent sign that would have a light in it, so that whole thing would glow.
Right.
That's not backlit.
We don't allow that.
Oh, that wouldn't be allowed?
Yes.
Okay.
So if, if that were, well, that, that would be a hard sign to light the way we're doing it, because only the, like that white background and the red background wouldn't be able to be lit.
Right. But if that was a flat board, you could light it with a spot outside.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
It does say, though, that the illumination must be dimmable, so any illumination must not adversely affect residential tenants for this type of sign, so.
So I guess what I'm getting at is, is there something we need to change or modify to meet Brad's request, or is this already in here? It seems like it's already in here.
Well, I think we should definitely have a time on the light. It shouldn't be on when the store's closed or something.
No, I don't think that's right.
Before the applicant says, do we have any other questions for him?
I have to close the public.
Yeah, no, okay. And then no other speakers, so I'm going to close the public hearing. So I do have one suggestion, which is that I would like to see the canopy signs as not, not, no internally illuminated signs allowed. So they could be halo lit or they could be externally illuminated, but no, I think...
The letters themselves couldn't be plastic and light up individually.
Yeah, no channel letters. They're just, like cabinet signs are, are bad, and we've all, I think, decided that. I think channel letters are the, the next frontier, so.
Then the push-through acrylic lettering?
That's just where they're usually like, you know, aluminum letters with the plastic face and the light is within, right?
And it does say that the frontlit channel letters or face-illuminated sign boxes will not be permitted. So does that address your concern about the channel?
I guess.
Lettering on the canopy signs?
I guess I just don't, I don't, I guess I don't understand how they, how internally illuminated signs would be allowed there then, if, if there aren't, I don't understand what it's referring to then.
And regarding the timers, I, I don't think I could support having all the lights turned off. There's a couple reasons for that. Number one, it adds additional safety lighting on the street if you're walking on the street at night, and secondly, if someone's coming home from work late at night, they may see a store and come back the next day, and I think it creates an ambiance for the street that doesn't become a black dead zone. And I mean, if the signs are not offensive to the neighborhood, they're not glaring and they're not shining out. When daylight savings comes around, then it's dark at 5:00, so I think, you know, from...
And I agree.
But they're not, a lot of these places aren't going to be open after 5:00.
Oh, almost all of them.
On the corner of, on the corner of this development, where it's, it meets Powell and Powell and Hollis meet, isn't there a pretty big light feature there for the project just in general?
As part of the project, yeah, yeah.
And it's enormous?
I just enjoy, as a person who walks, like I said, I lived in Carmel at night. I would walk at night. Lights from signs and storefronts create ambiance, I think, and to restrict that...
They're all frontlit signs there.
Well, but the signs we're creating are going to be pretty friendly.
They're all backlit signs. All of these are backlit. Frontlit signs have to have a, a light fixture in front of them, facing them.
Right, and that's allowed? I think it's depending on what the person wants.
Because it's a lot more expensive and it's not as, doesn't catch your eye as much as a backlit sign does.
I think, I think people do it.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's a problem.
Only if they have to.
If we want them to have to.
Only if it's Carmel. Only if it's Carmel.
I have to say, I do, I really appreciate that the applicant is proposing, I, I think all of these signs are really high-quality sign types, and I really appreciate that. It's really refreshing when, and it's really refreshing, honestly, when an applicant wants to maintain really high-quality signs to make their project continue to look good, because that's not always the case.
I generally, I think that I like the sign program. I am a little concerned about the canopy internally lit signs, because the, the other ones that are over, underneath the building overhangs, they're going to be shielded from, upper units are going to be shielded, and it's going to be something you see as a pedestrian or as you drive by, but it's not going to be projecting onto the people across the street or whatever, but that one instance of having the, above the canopy where it is internally lit, I'm a little worried about.
Well, that would be the one that would bother the neighbors the most, and maybe that's the one that should.
The signs that face the residential units across the street, I'm just, in the evening, I don't understand what, who are they advertising for, because on Powell Street, people just are going to zoom by there. They're not going to be slowing down the look for something on that stretch of road.
Well, it'll probably be like a lot of places, vacant stores.
I love your optimism.
We got an awful lot of them.
I mean, that does beg the question of, you know, the dimming the signs at night or turning them off, and, you know, if the neighbors find that they have concerns about those signs, because I don't think they're advertising for any particular clientele in that, at that hour.
Well, we do have that condition, right, that the, that they be dimmable.
Yeah, that they be dimmable.
And if the neighbors complain, they'll come to Charlie, and Charlie will tell them to dim it.
That's right.
Can we entertain a motion to approve?
Well, I'm, I want to, I want to clarify one thing first, because I, I am a little confused about the canopy signs. So the applicant told us that internally illuminated signs would be allowed there, but reading this, it says signs, canopy signs may be externally lit, okay, I got that, halo lit, got that, lit using decorative exposed neon, pushed, pushed through acrylic lettering, or backlit. So I actually don't see, except for the exposed neon, I don't see how they would be internally illuminated. Am I missing something?
No, I just, I had, maybe I was mistaken. I thought it was one of the ones that was inter.
The whole box is internally illuminated.
Can I elaborate?
Yes.
Please.
Couple different ways that could be done. They could be halo lit, where the lighting is actually internal. But the face is opaque and the light bleeds out the sides. So that's technically an internally lit thing, because the lighting sources are inside. It could also be, you know, shape of a logo, and then the reverse cut push-through, what they do is they take the solid aluminum face and they cut out the logo or the letters, say, the, you know, letter T. They cut that out, and then they take a piece of acrylic and they fit it into that space from behind, and they push it through. And then you can either have an opaque face, and again, it bleeds out and becomes a halo lit letter, or that light would actually be coming through the face of the letter. But we do specifically forbid channel letters, so we don't want channel letters up on the canopy.
Okay.
So someone's going to do a, a letter up there and light it. It has to be an architectural grade thing.
So, okay, thank you.
Sure.
One more question or comment. So on the canopy signs, it stipulates that visible bird repellent devices are not permitted on those signs. So is the plan to have shock tape on the signage of all types, including, like the projection, the projecting signs? Does the pigeons like to roost on those, too?
Yes, I, I think that the idea is just that it, whatever...
Whatever you use, it's not visible.
Yeah, so whatever they can come up with, just can't be visible.
Okay.
So can I make a motion to approve?
Sure.
Are there any conditions anyone to add?
Well, how do y'all feel about the push-through acrylic lettering? Is there any?
Describe again what it looks like.
That's the one he was describing.
I was reading.
I think the Apple sign is done that way, where the apple is actually cut out of an aluminum panel and the apple is a, an acrylic piece that's fit into that, plug-fit into that space.
But imagine if the apple...
It pushes out.
Yeah.
But imagine if the apple was, was someone's store name, right, on a, on a panel, on a rectangular panel on the canopy.
I think the amount of light that pushes through, through that is pretty limited in its range of distance, how far it will go out, so, and if they're dimmable as well, I think if they become a problem, they would be dimmed and calmed down.
Right, they're part of that requirement to be dimmable.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and the reason we chose that sign type is because that, they don't tend to project light forward. You have to use a thicker piece of acrylic to, for the face, and so it's not, it doesn't have that same intensity of something like a channel letter. It's, it's very much an architectural grade style sign. That was the goal.
So I made the motion to approve as staff recommends?
Did we have a second?
Yes.
Oh, okay. And there were no modifications, that's as...
Well, dimmable, is that...
That's in, that's in there.
They're all dimmable.
All right, ready? Commissioner Cardoza?
Aye.
Commissioner Donaldson?
Aye.
Commissioner Gunkel is recused. Commissioner Keller?
Aye.
Vice Chair Tan?
Aye.
And Chair Moss?
Aye.
Five ayes, the application is approved. This decision may be appealed to the City Council within 15 years. Council within 15 days.